Agenda.
Um, no, Mr. Mayor, there are none.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no pre- oh, there is a presentation. Declaration of Elko Newmarket Fire Department and Police Department First Responders.
Oh, come on, Ann, don't be shy.
Just remember when you come in, you have to stay for the whole meeting.
Where do you want us to stand?
Somewhere.
Probably over there for Patrick.
I'll shut the, I'll just shut it off.
On behalf of the Elko Newmarket City Council and the Scott County All Hazards Committee, the week of May 20th to 26th is recognized as Emergency Medical Services Week. I would like to present the following certificates of appreciation to the city of Elko Newmarket's first responders. These certificates are to recognize Police Department, Fire Department, and the Northfield Ambulance Service in the spirit of EMS Week. The individuals that serve in these positions are highly trained and committed to providing the highest possible service to the citizens of our community. These men and women work to make our city and county a safer place to live, and by their service, they help raise our standard of living. A great number of people are treated each year by these responders during their time of need. Providing treatments and working in cooperation with other agencies on issues such as training and standard of care is another example of the dedication of these professionals show for the public. Their dedication and willingness to serve is much appreciated by the city of Elko Newmarket, Scott County, All Hazards Committee, and the citizens of our community and county. Do we clap? It is time for public comments. Is there anyone here for a public comment this evening? Commissioner Wolf.
Hi, me. Tom Wolf, Scott County Commissioner, council members, Mr. Mayor, everybody. Just a couple of things at the county. We were watching the bonding bill at the Capitol, and I don't know if the governor's signed it yet. There was a couple of things we were looking at with the medical examiner's thing and Parks Department and the Earths facility in Savage. They were all in there to some degree. Whether he signed it or not yet, I don't know. So, we're just gonna wait on that. The tax thing that the, one unit of government passed that's gonna mesh up with the federal deal with the cuts they just made, did not pass. And I don't know what that's gonna do to people, but I think it's gonna cost people money. I don't know if you think that or not, Josh, but I think it's.
Well, it depends on how quick, I mean, regardless, revenues aren't gonna be able to turn around by tax season to do anything about it.
Yeah, well.
But if you pull a special session out of somewhere.
Yeah, they may have to do that, yep. And they may do it early next year, too, so who knows? But, so, we're looking at our tax levy. We're starting to get into that season again here, so we have our first planning session for that here in June, and try to keep it in the three range or less, depends on the growth and the inflation. So, that's in the works. We have a lot of road projects going on right now across the county. And I just drove in, and I think I drove through three of them. So, 42 and 13 is going, 81 out by Spring Lake is going. I don't know if they've started with the roundabout out there yet or not, but that will get done this year. I'm going to, with the other four commissioners, we're going out to Washington, D.C. We got invited out there to talk about county issues in Minnesota. It's like a think tank. I don't know why I got invited then, but I guess we're all going out there next Thursday. Everything's all regimented to time. You gotta be there a certain time. You can't take certain things in, and it's, you know, so it's, but it's a big deal, so we're gonna go out there and hopefully we can get some input out there. And so, because of that, I won't be able to make the ribbon cutting next Thursday, so, but anyhow, that's all I have tonight, unless you have any questions. Yes.
Something I normally do with the engineering report, but since you're here, we're getting pretty favorable feedback on the signals with the bridge.
Okay.
Now, that's a Mindat jurisdiction.
Yes.
However, we anticipate when they're done, the polos, we're gonna hear about that, and I'm guessing. You will, too.
Do you, they like them?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and they want them to stay somehow or another?
That's what we're hearing.
Okay.
Anecdotally, what we're hearing is that it functions at some point today better with one lane than the lights than it does before.
Really?
Sure, because you're allowing the traffic to flow.
Yeah. I'll talk to Solberg, you know, we know John Solberg from Mindat. I'll see what he thinks about it, so thank you for bringing that up.
What we'll likely do is draft a letter on behalf of the city to our rep, I can't think of her name right now, I can picture her, but we'll copy Tony. But just a heads up that that's out there, so.
Yeah, okay, well, that's good, right? Because the first day, no good. Because I heard that, at least once, so anyhow, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Me.
Why is it, a public comment is for something that's not on our agenda?
Well.
Just so you know, we probably won't take action this evening, but.
Oh, well, water's backing up on my property again. A month ago, we got a foot of snow, it backed up, and the whole tile line there, 31 blowouts, and it's plugged, partially plugged, I should say. And beginning of April, it was 14, so over a month, well.
14 what?
14 blowouts. Now, there's 31. From all the way from the gravel road all the way to the.
Trish.
To the.
Keep passing to Trish.
Yes, to the property line in the city.
Dan gave me some pictures just earlier.
I'm rolling pictures. I was taking a picture from the silo, behind the barn there. And in the inlet, all the dirt's washed in there, and it's ending up in that retention pond. That retention pond's gotta get cleaned up. Just a little river going through there should be cleaned up, so.
Okay.
You know, it's an ongoing thing.
Have you talked to Cory? Does he know what I'm talking?
I ain't talking to him. He doesn't listen. You don't listen. I told you guys that two years ago. You remember that? Remember when we met out there?
We've heard a lot of things, Dan, and we've looked at everything.
Yeah, but you remember meeting me out there. You and Cory were out there. I told you guys, gotta clean this up.
Yeah, if there's something new, that's, we'll be glad to look at it. This is the first I've heard about any blowouts, any sedimentation.
Well, those blowouts before, because it's your thing that you made up last fall.
Yep.
Read that, what I underlined.
Right.
Read it. This is your read, this is yours.
Yeah, that's great. I understand that. Actually, blowouts would help you because they allow more water out of that pipe, but that pipe is too small for what you want it to do, period.
Yeah.
We can look at blowouts, we can look at sedimentation, that's not gonna help you, but we'd be happy to do it if there's a problem already.
There's broken tile, and it's slowing up because more than a minute, those three of them things.
So, we've televised the tile on our end. The last time we televised it, it was not broken. So, if there's a new thing, we're happy to look at it.
Three of them site things where you got, one's full of water, the other two are empty. So, it's an ongoing thing. Did you guys see this here? My engineer did. Did you guys see this?
I think so.
I thought we did the last.
That was sent on to the city council.
Yeah. Well, something's gotta be done because that whole tile line from the gravel road all the way to the inlet, it's shot. It's going to help.
We'll take it under consideration, there's nothing that we can do.
I know, but because of that tile line being laid flat, too, it's causing the problem.
So, it's been that way for at least 80 years, so.
Being flat?
Absolutely.
I don't think so. Quite an amount of problems years ago.
How did it change, Dan? I don't wanna argue at this meeting, but what.
Because Troy down there, he says, you can't lay tile flat, down in soil and water.
And we can debate that for 10 hours and not change my mind, but if there's new information about broken tile, plugged tile, we're gonna look at that. And if that's something we can fix, we will. We cannot change the grade of the tile, we cannot change the size of the tile, we cannot change the snow or the rain.
Where are the broken, where all these broken tiles going? They're not coming out on the inlet, I'll bet, I mean.
I don't even, this is the first I've heard about a broken tile, period, so.
Well, you better look into it, because I'm sick of being backed up in water.
I know.
It's not, it's not on my field that's being wet. It's backing up from the ditch. Well, you can keep them pictures, show them there.
Yeah, I'll go through them.
Okay, because it's, it's an ongoing thing, it's getting sickening. Because we only had a foot of snow, because of, first April, there's no snow, and then April 15, we got that, well, there's a lot of water. It was a foot of snow, but it's a lot of water, but it backed up, so.
Thanks for letting us know, and we'll look at it, get in touch with you.
Any other public comments? Going once, twice, three times, public conference is closed? Any changes on the consents, items that a council person wants to pull for questions?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Go for it, Chris.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No public hearings? General business.
First item under general business tonight is the 2017 financial year audit. Matt Mayer from KDV Bergen is here to give a presentation. At the completion of the presentation, the council will be asked, considering accepting the audit. We also have Zach Dowd, our financial director, here this evening as well, to help answer any questions that might come up.
Thanks, Tom. Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to see you all again. Thanks for the time you've allowed on the agenda tonight. You've got two documents in front of you, which represent the final product of the audit. I've got a copy ahead of time as well. If you have questions about the specifics in there, we'd be happy to answer them, but I think it'd be safe just to sit back and watch the PowerPoint for the main pieces of the presentation tonight, so. If you have a clicker or it is not to you, we'll take care of things, I appreciate it. Let's go to the next slide. As you're aware, our role as auditors is to test, examine, give an opinion on the financial statements that the city prepares. And I, too, want to thank Zach and also Lila, the city accountant, for their hard work in getting prepared for the audit. They were very well prepared for us. The audit went smoothly, and we got some good numbers to report to you tonight and a good report in general, I think. We gave you a clean opinion on the numbers, so that means we can trust the numbers that we're gonna be looking at a little bit, and you can use those as a basis for what happened in 2017, and use that for your plans moving forward into future years. We looked at internal control.
Sorry.
Actually, we're still there with you. We looked at internal control as well, and internal control is a system of policies and procedures that you have in place here to ensure accurate financial reporting and safeguard your assets of the city. And we had two findings, one that you see every year, that's a segregation of accounting duties, a small accounting staff. We don't have all the touches on every transaction that we'd like to have. And also, we had some adjustments this year. If we change your books or correct your books in any way, we need to make you aware that we did find that we might have caused a couple of adjustments this year we needed to make you aware of. And then finally, from a legal compliance standpoint, there were a couple of contracting and bidding issues this year, and I know you're already in the loop on a lot of those regarding performance bonds, payment bonds, and just bidding specific projects and making sure those get out and not get to kind of combined or added on to other projects that are out there. If you'd like the specifics, we can discuss those at the end, but that was the one compliance fund that we had for 2017, so I think good reports pretty much across the board, and we can move on to the numbers themselves from there. Thanks. I'm gonna look at the general fund with you, then I'm gonna look at your water fund, your storm fund, and your sanitary sewer fund. And the general fund is where we'll start, and this is the fund that has most of the operations of the city. This is your police department, city clerk, administration, planning, all of that goes into the general fund. And the way to look at this fund, and whether it was a successful year for you or not, is how you comply with the budget that you, as a council, put together. At the end of each year, you put a budget together that sets the parameters for spending, puts a levy and the revenue stream out there, and at the end of the year, if administration executed on that budget the way you wanted them to, then it's a successful year in your general fund because they executed on the plan that you made. Your plan for 2017 was revenue of about $2 million, spending of 1.8 million, and transfers out to other funds, capital funds, basically setting aside for future needs on capital of about $163,000. So, after everything was said and done, you were looking for about a $40,000 surplus at the end of the year in the general fund, build on the fund balance, and increase the financial health in that fund at the end of the year. That was your plan. Next slide shows what actually happened. Revenue actually came in better than anticipated, it was about $126,000 higher than what you had budgeted for. A couple of things in there, one of them was you got some grants during the year that weren't in the initial budget, and as a result, you received some grant revenue that you didn't know about at the time that the budget was approved. It was a good year for development in the city, licenses and permits were up during the year as well, and then there was some sales of some miscellaneous assets during the year as well that weren't in the budget, and those proceeds went right to the bottom line as well. On the spending side, each of the department heads responsible for their budgets did a nice job in executing on it. You actually underspent for the year about $77,000, so 1.8 overall, $77,000 under budget. Public works was under, engineering and legal fees in the general fund were under, street maintenance was under, and the one area that was higher was public safety, and that's because the inspection fees related to that development and those licenses and permits were there as well, so you were higher on both sides. They kind of net to a real impact in the end, though. You did make some transfers over and above the amount that you had budgeted. You actually transferred $149,000 more during the year. That wasn't a transfer that you did authorize, that wasn't part of the budget, but you authorized it as a council, so more money went into the capital fund during the year than what you initially had budgeted. And that's a tool that you use, and we'll talk about fund balance levels in a little bit. You've got a threshold that you want for financial health in the general fund, and if you beat that or you're higher than that, then the excess gets managed by moving to capital and basically helping you save for future capital needs. So, that's what happened. You were healthier than you anticipated coming into, coming in from the 2016 year, and as a result, some of that surplus got moved to capital as well. So, fund balance actually went up for the year about $94,000 overall, and I'll show you some history on that in just a little bit. Next slide shows where the revenue's coming from. About three quarters of it is coming from taxes, so when you establish that levy, that's most of where your revenue's gonna come from. You do get a pretty good chunk of LGA as well, and that's represented by intergovernmental a little over a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, between LGA and your taxes, that's about 86% of your budget. We can talk about licenses and permit charges for services, but those are a really insignificant part of your general fund operations. It's really, once you know what your LGA is gonna be and once you set your levy, that's what's gonna happen when it comes to revenue. Go back a year, next slide, and those numbers are pretty much identical, about three quarters again in taxes and another 13% in intergovernmental. If we go ahead two slides, skip that one and go to spending, you're gonna see that about 42% of your budget in the general fund goes to the general government. That's administration, finance, planning, legal, and I think some engineering goes in there as well, and public safety represents about 34% of your budget. In a typical city, you're gonna see that public safety in the high 40s, bordering on 50%, but a lot of cities have public safety, excuse me, fire department in their general fund, and you guys have your separate fund for fire department to keep that separate. If we were to put the fire department into your general fund and include it with this number, you'd be right out there with everybody else, you'd be in the high 40s, almost 50% when it comes to public safety overall. But that public safety number in your general fund is specifically your police department and your building inspections, so we're not including that in those totals. Again, go back a year, and these numbers are almost identical. And what I like about that, and I've told you about this in years past, is that means that you, as a council, know where you want the spending to occur, and it's consistent from year to year, it's not all over the board, and then when you hand it to Tom and Zach and their team, they make that happen every year for you as well. So, it's a very solid regimented process that you can count on, and that's what you want as council members, that when you hand that budget off, you know it's gonna happen at the end of the year, and that's what's happening here at the city, so. Let's go on, a couple more slides, one more. And here's the general fund balance at the end of the year. In real dollars, it's $1,278,000. It's the highest it's been in the five years that are shown there, and it's probably better to look at it as a percentage of spending, and that's what your fund balance policy is based on. And you want to make sure, according to your fund balance policy, that you've got 50% of a year's worth of spending in there. So, we saw earlier, spent about 1.8 million in the general fund. You have a fund balance of $1,278,000. If you run the numbers on that, it's about 70% at the end of the year, so that, again, means that you're higher than your fund balance policy's calling for. Tom will come to you to monitor and manage that fund balance, probably some transfers here in the year ahead, and you'll continue to work in that range that you're comfortable with. So, you're certainly meeting the minimum expectations that you've got for yourselves, and you've got a little bit of cushion to work with as well, which gives you a lot of good options when it comes to capital needs of the city, which are always a demand. Let's go from here to your enterprise funds. I've got three charts to wrap things up. It's difficult to analyze your water fund, your sewer fund, and your sanitary, and your storm drainage fund. I'm gonna do my best to kind of run a few numbers, and if you have any questions about where you think you're landing on this, please, you know, jump in when it comes to this. But the first thing we want to look at in an enterprise fund is are our user fees covering our costs of doing business? And we can look at that, and that the green bar is your revenue stream, and it was just shy of $1.3 million for the year, and you can see that your operating expenses for the year were about $593,000. So, it looks on the surface like the fee structure is there, and you're covering what it costs to run that, pay the salaries, pay the supplies, take care of the depreciation in that fund. Now, the one thing that I want you to be aware of when it comes to revenue, you're seeing a big spike this year, and it goes back to that development that I was talking about. There's the WAC fees, there's the hookup fees, there's the trunk fees, and all of that is in there, and that can be one-time money, so that kind of skew things a little bit. So, it was a very good year for you in 2017 when it comes to that, but it's, you know, depending on development, that could go back down again. So, you're managing your rate structure on the monthly user fees. That rates went up about 2% or 3% on the various levels that you have for water usage, so that helped you, and you did see about $80,000 of growth in your revenue stream related to the rate structure adjustments that you made during the year, so that's gonna help you moving forward. The other thing to look at is the operating income at the bottom there, and you see some pretty big numbers, about $700,000 in operating income with depreciation factored in, and $885,000 with it factored out, and that's in the far column for 2017. So, it looks like the fund's extremely profitable, which it is. But the other thing to be aware of is that you've got significant debt in this fund, a big PFA note, you've got some bonding in this fund as well, and the annual debt service on this fund is between $700,000 and $800,000 a year, principal and interest. So, you're making the money that you need to, but to turn around immediately and pay the bondholders, so from a cash flow standpoint, you're kind of treading water, in fact, maybe even just losing a little bit of ground in this fund. And your liquid fund balance in this fund, it began the year with about $500,000 in liquid assets, and because of the debt service and the other needs that you had, it ended the year with about $135,000 in fund balance. So, again, something to be conscious of, something to be aware of, and Tom's got some analysis as well to be.
Yeah, so it's a constant where we're going for our utility fund balance. We have the analysis we do where we show the minimal fund balance, all the minimal that's required, the balance by PFA. So, ideally, we do want to see that operating income going up so that we can start creeping that reserve balance that Matt's talking about upwards over.
Over time, and I just wanted to point that out, then. We generally want that liquid funds at the end of the year to be going.
Exactly. So. With the debt service obligation this year, it could drop, but you're gonna make progress on that, the interest will go down, and, you know, that's, again, assuming no future debt, but in the beginning.
Highly development dependent.
That's fair to say. So, the trend is good. You can see from the revenue stream that we're moving in the right direction. Certainly, the performance is solid as well, and hopefully that trend continues. The one wild card, again, is the development that we've got at wildcard, that there's some one-time fees with the connection and the others in there that are driving that. Let's do the sewer fund next. This one is challenging to look at as well, and the issue here is that we aren't making operating income in this particular fund. You can see deficits each of the last five years running, so we want to be conscious of that. You have looked at the rate structure there, and again, we're looking at 2% or 3% increases on the rates on an annual basis there, so we're moving in the right direction, but the operating expenses in this fund are significant. There's not a big debt obligation in this fund, so you don't have that like you do in water. It's about $100,000, $150,000 a year when it comes to that, so that's not as alarming. But what's challenging in this fund is your relationship with the Met Council and the various user fees that you've got, their take on the SAC fees and the obligations and the commitments that you've made related to that, and then the overall obligation. We know it's gonna ultimately be capped, but you've been feeling that, and that's what's been hitting you here. And what happened in this fund, you did begin the year in deficit about $676,000, and with the debt service and with the additional operating loss this year, it did go down to about a million-dollar deficit in this particular fund. And that'll, to a certain extent, be capped with the agreement that you reached at that 1.2 million dollar level, but this fund, again, has got some operating challenges and growing pains ahead, I think, and again, we refer to Tom on some additional analysis.
Let's do some analysis. This fund is extremely sensitive to development fees, so, which don't have offsetting for infrastructure, system infrastructure expenses, is very, has a very big impact on the health of this fund. We will see some progress probably coming into, what do you finish, 2018, here, because we've already had some, like, laboring come in, the trunk fees in this fund already this year, and there's a strong indication that we will see some more, so I think there'll be some positive impacts on the overall health of the fund, but that's something that we need to see at a certain level on a continuing basis. And we'll, Zach can help over that in more detail when we need this fall, when we start going through the utility fund, right analysis.
When we finally reach the point where it's capped, or debt with the Met Council is capped, is that gonna help in finally see it start to go the other way?
That'll provide some level of stability on the backend of it, but again, maybe Tom can speak to. I don't, is that on a revolving basis, so if you start to pay down on it?
Once we reach that gap, you're essentially set up a term loan with the Met Council for 10, I believe it's 15 years, our choice, and with mix claim, so what it'll do is it'll provide stability with regards to the fee and that long-term liability or some, which will actually start to be down, right now, it's been continually going over time. So, the impact of that really on the fund is gonna be long-term, there will be, I would see that there'll be immediate impact on the fund, but there will be a long-term, there will be a longer.
I think what would really help is that when we hit that circuit breaker, it's actually gonna bring down our debt, because every single year, we're basically, are adding more debt on our books every single year. Even though we're paying the Met Council, we're basically adding more debt every single year. So, once we hit that 1.2 million dollar breaker, we're basically taking away debt and not having anything add back to our books, which is essentially what we want to happen.
So, what is the timeline on that? If we're at, Zach, when would you?
2020, 2021?
Yep. So, we're just a few years away.
Few years away, depending on activity. So, like I said, the more activity we have currently, which is great for the fund, prolongs that 1.2 million dollar circuit breaker, so it might be 2023 then at that point, depending on activity, because the more activity we have, the more payments we make with the Met Council, the closer we get to their projected amount of, number of new homes that they had us at like $5 a year or something like that.
It's 224, so.
Yeah.
Or something like that. It was ludicrous.
Correct.
We might push it out, but the amount of growth we would have to have actually halted, that is beyond our expectations for our funds.
And then the final chart is your storm drainage fund, storm sewer fund, and after three years, from '13 to '15, of actually expenses exceeding revenue, revenue stream has been solidified, and you've actually had operating income the last couple of years running. That's been growing from 2016 to 2017, so I think we're moving in the right direction. There's a little bit of one-time money in that number for 2017, but I think the adjustments you made to the rate structure there are moving you in the right direction. Good news on this one is that this fund doesn't have a significant operating expenses, about half of that is depreciation, so only about $100,000 of your actual operating activity in this one. operating activity in this one. Does have debt service, about a hundred thousand of debt service each year. And we did take a little bit of a step back despite the good numbers here in 2016 and 2017. The liquid fund balance started the year about a hundred and sixty-three thousand, ended the year about thirty-six thousand. That had to do with capital expenditures as well as the debt service in this particular fund. So, again, go ahead, Tom.
Just wanted to clarify, the two twenty-four, the amount of units on, that my council was assuming was based on an average of two hundred and some units per year over the twenty-year period. The amount that they're actually projecting for purposes of the debt service, when the original setup was ramping up over that period of time?
Okay.
So it might be closer, at this point in time, closer to ninety at this point in time, but still, the reality is, you combine that with what was expected in the past, if it continued to ramp up, that was projected for a number of units per year, we're just gonna move that out, we're never, we're not gonna catch it.
So unlike the general fund, where it's kind of, this is what we want to happen, hand it off, and let's check back at the end of the year, there's a lot of moving parts in these utility funds. The questions that I would ask as council members going forward is from a rate structure. Is it a rate structure that is competitive, that we can sustain? Is it covering our operating expenses from each year? What about the debt service obligations? Can we project that out? And what's our rate structure gonna do in relation to that debt service? And then also the capital aspect of it as well, and having a capital plan. Is it gonna be cash flowed? Is it gonna be with future debt, needs that you have? And again, a lot of moving parts. So these funds, I think, need to be monitored a little more closely. The general fund, it's very well-established, it's very similar from year to year, but there's just a lot of dynamics in these utility funds, and they need a little bit more oversight. Get your input, make sure that you're comfortable throughout the year as well. I'll leave it at that. If there's a fund you wanted to know about or activity that I didn't discuss, be happy to talk about that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
There's a number in the presentation, the big one?
Yep.
On page forty-nine. And I'd just like clarification as to whether it's a typo, if there's a missing comma?
Okay. Let me get a copy of that here.
It just doesn't.
Oh, yep.
I think it's just supposed to be nine, I think the four is just not supposed to be there.
Four is supposed to be dollars.
I think it's a dollar sign, I needed, we missed the shift on it, so.
Okay. I just, I just.
Good catch.
I didn't want to make any assumptions.
I'm glad somebody's reading the details. The shift on a keyboard is a dollar for four.
Okay, so.
Yep, a dollar. Nine sixty-one, eight hundred was in that per seat from that.
I assumed that, but I didn't.
Thank you for the question.
Would you mind going back to the bidding issues that you had?
Sure.
In the beginning, what were those issues?
My understanding, it was a well, it was a well project?
Well, it's a project. It's all worked out. It's right.
Yeah, I think we, you did some bidding on the one part of it, and then ultimately we went to another well.
We had a finding on that before you got it. Had a finding.
Yep, and then I think additionally too, that was just the bonding related to that second project.
And then the other findings, segregation duties, I.
Which is every year.
If it's every year, I mean, you have substantially larger finance staff than that. And so those cities in that area. How many cities actually have that finding?
I'd say well over seventy-five percent, if not close to eighty or ninety.
So that's not, I mean, I recognize the finding, but it's not significant finding that causes a concern from.
Well, it's a, you can smooth punch it.
Yeah. We have it at the high level right now. I think there's, there's been a lot of transition in your accounting the last couple of years, and I think getting some established policy procedures, getting some ownership of tasks now that you've got kind of more stability there. It's been kind of in flux the last couple of years, and I think we can bring it down one level of severity, and it'll probably stay at a middle level based on the number of folks that you got, and just to make sure that you're aware of it.
Basically, just have an elevated risk of fraud or.
Yeah, and the other piece is we, it goes to the material audit adjustments. We made a couple corrections this year, and that's because in a perfect environment, you'd have somebody actually do the transaction, you'd have somebody post the transaction, you'd have somebody look at it to make sure everything is okay, and when you got the same person wearing all three hats, people, you know, even though you're trying to check your work and doing it all, things are gonna happen. And that's what happened. We came across a couple corrections needed to be made, and that's one symptom, I think, of this segregation of duties. Once you get an established onsite person, you get Zach truly in an oversight role rather than getting his fingers into the nuts and bolts of it, I think those things will ultimately eliminate. And once we see that for a couple of years, we'll lower it in severity.
Any other questions or discussion? Do I hear a molester? Seven.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion advances? Item B.
Thank you.
Item B, Mr. Mayor. City council being asked to approve a letter of support from the MBTA to Scott County Board for funding to support a pilot project to extend commuter service, regular commuter service to the city of Elkhorn Market.
Are we skipping B and going to C?
Oh, I did, so.
Okay, that's fine, because I mean, since they're here.
So simply here, if we could do this one and then.
Let's do letter C first. So you're on letter C.
So the intent is that the county board be asked for funding to support a pilot commuter service project that would extend commuter transit service down to Elkhorn Market for two-year period with the intent of basically determining the feasibility of the project and trying to build a commuter service. As you know from a previous presentation that was made by MBTA staff, it normally takes about two years to establish your route, so that two-year period would be used to identify whether or not the route is viable, and then how you would go about funding normalization, continuation of that route. Right now, the proposal is to ask the county board through their transportation improvement plan to fund the pilot project in its entirety, and so the letter of request has been, is ready to be submitted and asking for a letter of support from the city on that topic. The council will note that when we talked about this the last time, the intent was to do a little bit more legwork prior to this point in time, just the timing didn't allow to get all of that completed. I have had some discussions with county staff, and what they have advised me is that the likelihood of funding in this particular cycle is very low, but we aren't too hard to bridge, we're not burning any bridges by submitting.
By asking.
By asking. There's no harm in asking, but they were telling me that given other priorities they have to fund, we're being funded.
But we have nothing to lose by asking.
Correct, and that was the purpose for my making a court of the county.
Do we have other priority, I mean, other things that we're asking for that we want to ask something like this for?
Yes, I don't think it will be a competing issue with other asks or other problems in the fact that we asked, we won't, we won't have a negative reaction, or there won't be any, we wouldn't be burning any political capitals, for lack of a better term, for the county, with the fact that we did support the request from, from the MBTA.
One thing I'm gonna point out is, this, this comes out of a, it's not, not the same pot of money that they're using for the roads and bridges. This comes out of, this part of the sales tax that they've dedicated to transit, so.
The sales, the half-cent sale?
Right. Okay. So it's kind of our first ask, and we don't have as much documentation as we'd like at this point, but it's always better to set the table for it for maybe next year, when we do have everything.
But in reading it, it was noted that if we don't potentially move this now, we're looking at pushing it out potentially a couple more years even. Just, just the way timings work and, I don't know.
And I hear what you're saying about the, they're two separate things, but, you know, as we look at the trail thing here.
Money's money.
Right, I mean, so from your discussions, you don't think that there's competing things here where we're gonna say, okay, we'd love to see this, but we're also gonna hold you to your policy that says you should find the trail at half the cost too? And then are they, is there gonna be pushback for one of those things?
No, I think the discussion related to the road projects portion is separate from this one. And again, I've already spoken with senior county staff, and so they understand the circumstances here, so I don't think there would be any pushback from us making the request, but they were, I mean, they were pretty blunt about the available funding that's there, the priorities that they have, commitments that they already have that are there, and just simply indicated that the chances of this being funded aren't highly likely in this particular cycle.
So we give Cory a lot of credibility because he never asks for money, he never asks for anything until he really needs it. And because of that, when we look at requests that he has for equipment or staff or whatever it is, he has a high level of credibility, and I don't think I'm out of line by saying, speaking for all of us in saying that. At what point does it look like we're just doing the outside? I know you've said, and said repeatedly, this, they're two separate things, but at some point, don't we, if we keep asking for stuff?
Don't we just kind of become the voice that's always asking for things?
Well, the things that we've asked, we've never, until the last couple of years, we've never submitted requests really to the county. The requests that we've made have been really specific. In the past, they've been the roundabout, which just came up more recently, and then we've asked for improvements out on the east side of County Road Two and interim improvements at the interchange. We've been very specific with the county on those, and we're kind of getting into the next item, but the county's response on that has been, we'll do it out there once there's a project out there. We've got other needs on the system which are greater. So we've been consistent in our requests, they've been consistent in their response, and there's no harm in asking. There are other communities which also ask for dollars on the county road system in and adjacent to their communities as well. That's what the process is set up for, is to ask. And there's a scoring system, and then there's ultimately a decision by the board. The one item where we're asking at the last couple of years has been the roundabout, and the county's feedback on that has also been pretty consistent. When you guys did the project, you agreed upfront that we weren't gonna be picking up the project costs associated with it, and you're free to ask later, but you agreed upfront that we weren't gonna be participating. And so we've changed our approach on how we're asking for that. I think those projects are separate from the transit discussion as well. I just, the impression I had with talking, again, with senior county staff member was, wasn't that they were, it was a bad request, they understood why it was being requested, they're just simply saying, given priorities and commitments, the chance that it's gonna get funded is low. I think it's important, too, that it's in response to a request or a process that they put out, they're, they're asking for projects.
They're asking for requests.
Well, that's different than what we're talking about here, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I think one thing we should look at here, too, is we're sending a letter of support. MBTA is actually asking for them to do it, because they think, they believe it's important to extend transit out here. They think it would work for this area, not just for, not just for our residents.
And this isn't out of the blue either. In a report to the board last month, they were made aware that, from an MBTA representative of the board, that the MBTA is having discussions with Elkhorn Market about potential future transit service, so I don't think there's gonna be any huge surprise that there's a request, that there's a request coming forward. But it depends on your approach to this. You can have high credibility when you ask, but also, but that's how it works within our organization. A lot of these requests sometimes, and the approach that we've taken with our road projects is we want to keep it in front of the board, we want to keep it visible, and even though we know it's not going to, we think that the likelihood is low this session, at least keeps it out there as a discussion point for future plans. To use an example with regards to decisions regarding funding, we tried very aggressively for a few years to get included in legislation for reimbursement sales tax related to the water treatment plant. This year, quite honestly, we didn't put the effort forward, we thought it was a dead issue. It was put in by a separate legislator, by essentially the chair of the tax committee who was familiar with the issue, and it was put in separately, because that issue had been out there, repeatedly put out there, and the seed had been planted. I think there's something to what Councilmember Julius is saying, but it all depends on how you approach it and the best strategic way to approach it with the organization. I don't have a strong opinion either way on it as to how we should approach it. I'm just telling that the feedback I've had is there wouldn't be any negative political fallout with making the request.
Personally, I feel it's premature, and if we're asking for something that's premature to do. I mean, if we play the hypothetical game, and let's say that we, it actually gets done, and it, and we are premature, we don't have the ridership that's needed, and now it fails, how far does that set us back? It feels to me like it's more, almost potential more harm than good by pursuing it at this point, because it's a premature request, in my opinion. But that's my opinion.
Is, is this being submitted, whether we support it or not?
Sir, the answer's no, but Richard can explain it.
Hi, Richard Crawford, MBTA. Good to see you again. You know, we're, we're trying to be responsive to the city of Elkhorn Market. We've had a good relationship the past several years as the ex officio member of the board, and when we came out for the discussion in April, the pilot concept we came up with was the best route we thought that would work for Elkhorn Market, and, no, the answer is no. We would not go forward with this if the city of Elkhorn Market does not want to go endorse the submission, but we do have this concept that we've worked up, so if you chose not to go forward, this would be something that we could put on the shelf and bring back whenever the right time would be to move forward.
So, so one option would be to essentially table this for the 2018 cycle and look at moving forward in the 2019. In discussions with, with Richard on this issue, basically what their intent was is if we don't hit this cycle, it could potentially push it back a year or two, so they're just trying to be responsive. It's ultimately, as Richard indicated, if we're not comfortable, they're not going to push the issue. If we feel we need more time to examine the issue, if we feel that there might be a greater chance of success waiting down the road, that's basically the direction, I think, is being asked for at this point.
I, I'm just thinking it doesn't hurt to do it now, I mean, try it, put it before them, and then at the very least, by next year, I have a strong feeling that we can get support from some of the other surrounding cities and townships for this. And the second time around, if there's even more support, they'll have already seen it, they'll see the support's growing, and it'll be much easier if we, if we put it in it in this cycle. And there is strong support on the MBTA board for doing it, so.
We, I did have a discussion today with MBTA along with the city administrators from Lonsdale and New Prague. You recall the discussion was to meet with them and just determine their assessment of what interests there might be of ridership in their communities, and if something was to happen to help promote the route and those types of things. The feedback we had at the meeting today was positive. I mean, it's, it's similar to what I sensed from our council. If we're not having to levy a dollars to support it at this point, and somebody else wanted to fund it, of course, we'd be positive. It would be viewed as a benefit to the community and along the corridor, and that was the same general response that those administrators provided, but it was just the initial discussion. There wasn't a ton of detail in the discussion, and they, of course, had not had any discussions with their own elected and appointed officials regarding the topic. So waiting another cycle might allow for more detailed discussions, maybe generating a more formal support if it's there, or maybe a decision that it's not. So that would be an advantage of waiting. The disadvantage simply is it's one more year before the topic gets on the table, and an argument can be made both ways.
I am fully supportive of submitting it. I mean, I, just the process of getting it out there, whether it gets approved or not, if it gets approved, I mean, I don't think it's gonna matter if it's a year or two, I don't think anything's gonna change with the ridership stuff or anything like that, so. And I think just having it out there in front of them, seeing that you typically don't get stuff the first go-round anyway when it comes to this kind of process, so I think it just gets it out there, and I'm absolutely supporting doing it.
To your point, I did talk to Luther about if it fails, is that gonna set us back for a long, for a longer time? And he said, no. He said, these kind of pilot projects, that's what they're put in place for, is to see if they work. I mean, the best, best example is the suburb-to-suburb transportation, going up to Maple Grove and all that. It didn't work, so they, they stopped it. But I think they feel that this, that this would probably work, and that's even before we got into discussions with other communities.
And I think it's different comparing it to what we talked about with Cory and our departments. I mean, we all pay Scott County taxes, so I think to get some of this, I don't think it's wrong to ask for, for stuff back that, you know, we've contributed to that, and when we go up to the Capitol and ask for bills and money and all that stuff all the time, that's an ask for stuff that we not are owed or anything, but as much as anybody else is, I don't think it's bad to ask for it, and you get turned down, you get turned down.
Our community does provide a significant amount of sales tax with the track and all the businesses in town, so asking for something back is not a bad thing.
Well, that's kind of the piece that makes me just wanna say, let's just do it, because we're not getting anything else out of this half-cent sales tax that we supported, which I ranted on my last meeting, and I won't do it again, but, I mean, Trish, are you, is this something you're in support of?
I'm completely in support of it.
And I'll support the rest of my council members and be on board with it.
Do you need a motion or just direction?
I would want a motion to submit the letter.
Second? All in favor? Aye.[1789.12]
All in favor?
Aye. Turned down, man?
We took care of it.
We turned.
Thank you guys for coming.
You couldn't tell where that was going to go, could you?
Keep you moving.
Just like that.
Okay, now we're back to item B.
So I'll let Rich and Renee talk through the various items in the submittal. I think we're essentially resubmitting the interim improvements at the interchange and the improvements to the east side of County Route Two. The east side of County Route Two is basically an argument based on economic development. We need to do that if we're going to be able to attract more economic development to that area. This has been identified as a growth corridor for the county, so on and so forth. The improvements at the top of the interchange is based on function, we're starting to see and project failures at the interchange, and so we're trying to address that issue. So unless you have questions on that, maybe we can move past if those are self-explanatory. We are taking a different approach with regards to the roundabout from what we took last year.
Are you wanting to move on from the interchange piece?
No, no, I just, we can talk about it if you want, but if you don't want to, that's fine.
I do.
Okay, so we'll come back to that. And then the other piece, hi Tim.
Hi.
The other piece was taking a different approach where the county's indicated we're not going to participate in the roundabout itself, but Rich has pointed out that they have a participation policy with regards to trails. And so we're taking the approach to say, hey, we're asking for your financial participation that would be at least justifiably consistent with your current policies, and it's an element that may not be actually included within the, within the roundabout project itself, but we may be doing as a separate but related project.
Say that last word again, this is not already included, doesn't have to be designed or it, or what?
No, so when we're looking at all of these projects associated with it, they may be actually, we may fund it as part of one package, but they may actually be separate projects because of the limitations of the grant, the scope of the project, etc.
What I'm asking is the design that we have grouped for the roundabout, these trails have been referenced and they're already part of that design?
Yes, that's what we're asking for, yeah.
Tom and I were told by our, the county administrator, not to include those in the project because what sometimes happens if you raise the scope of the project from what you applied for, from the grant application, you can get, have it rescored and we may lose it.
The other justification, and this is really the primary justification, is the county, part of the, if you recall from going back almost two years now, part of the county's rationale for not participating, and the reason that they're willing to help us out is they have so many dollars related to road safety improvements within the county. This intersection doesn't even score in the top tier, anywhere near the top tier from a standard for other intersections that they prioritize dollars. They're already fully utilizing that, what their financial bandwidth on projects higher. So the rationale is, we're happy to sponsor the application, but if we had the money to go into this roundabout, we'd put it at an intersection which is less safe.
And, well, I don't want to go back to maybe talk about that a hundred times, but if we... So that spreadsheet that showed all the different costs and everything, this would offset some of those costs in there. And that's what I was trying to drill down. And by requesting this, are we shortening ourselves or potentially requesting more money for other things?
If you're talking about within the...
Like as, we get away from the roundabout and we look at...
The feedback...
No, I'm talking specific to the roundabout, if we were trying to get additional funding for other areas.
I think this is our only shot, the feedback that we had from the county on this based on additional discussions with county administrator and our county commissioner, I won't use the exact verbiage, but they indicated the chance that there will be any funding coming to any of our three requests is extremely low.
Well, then let's just approve. I mean, that's just the most, that's frustrating.
It's absolutely...
Really frustrating.
So this is, this is a different, but this is a different approach.
This is a very different approach.
But at this...
This is using the county's policies.
And they're going to apply it.
It's not against them, it's just asking them to step up and...
It's reminding them of our historical agreements to work together on projects.
So when they come through and do it, you know, when they're coming through and doing a county project, they expect us to participate, although their general approach is we won't do it unless you're participating. But we're saying, hey, we're doing a project, the dollars we're not asking for are not astronomical and it's related to a project that is, and your cost participation is consistent with your policies. It's a different approach.
And it's all part of the whole CIP process and the goal that they have for community, whatever, so I think it's great.
Basically what the administrator told us, if they had the extra funds to put into our roundabout project, they would have used one of the round, one of the intersections that would score a lot higher than ours and applied for the grant themselves. But they didn't have it, so since we were going to put the money in, they applied for the grant for us and you were able to get it.
Which, and I appreciate them doing that, I'm just, I'm kind of with Josh on this. It's just, it's frustrating because really what we're doing by accelerating the timeline of this roundabout, and we're really not talking about roundabout, but just, generally, we're saving the county and the taxpayers a lot more money than the county is actually potentially giving up.
So there is the possibility that...
It's frustrating.
By taking this approach, we're providing a mechanism for them to participate, which...
Yep.
And still safe.
No, I'm all for it. I'm not arguing against it. I'm just more whining and complaining.
Yeah.
So is there anything in this group of things that we don't want to do or we don't want to...
Joe, you wanted to talk about the...
And I just had a question on the interchange piece. Does that, well, to put, the extension, or the, I'm sorry, County Route Two from thirty-five to Pillsbury.
Yep.
We just did work on that.
So that's part of the county's point, is they just did an overlay project on that and their intent is we want to get as much life out of that. If there isn't actual big projects coming to that site, we want to get as much life out of that investment as we can until we have to rebuild it. The county, the county has continued to indicate that if we did have a big user, they would try and do things. The problem is, is it's the chicken and the egg argument with regards to that improvement. We're asking for it primarily, it's not needed today, we're asking for it as a economic development investment by the county.
It's removal of an impediment to development, or potential impediment.
Potential impediment, it just seems like it's, again. Lastly, the post lights on the interchange, that was in here as temporary, is that temporary until the interchange gets completely rebuilt? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
If you recall, when we did the study, it identified some interim improvements at a lower cost.
Right.
And then a full interchange replacement once it's justified and could be funded.
Yeah, I'm done talking.
So you want direction on this or do you want another motion?
We'd want a motion directing us to send the request to Scott County.
Motion some...
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I, just, I'm going to take a three minute recess right now. We're on to discuss the Barsonas project.
So the council is being asked to provide, discuss and basically provide direction with regards to the collection of unpaid fees and other monies due to the city from Barsonas related to various land use applications that they have submitted to the city, which were curating application, sketch plan review application, and a preliminary plat beauty application. This is an item which is discussing pending litigation. So the council would, if it so chooses, but it's not required to, can close the meeting, it has been placed on the agenda, regular agenda as a closed meeting item. So if you so choose to close the meeting, you can, but we would need a motion and we need to state for the record during the open meeting the purpose for the closing. And then we would then open the meeting afterwards before we actually, before we make any actual decision. So I guess the first question for the council is, does the council wish to close the meeting for the discussion on this item?
Can we discuss the merits of closing the meeting first before...
That's, yep, that's essentially what I'm asking.
I'm going to say one thing here first. I've talked to three business leaders in town, not the, not Barsonas, who are looking at this project and thinking about getting involved. And I would just like to table this motion till the next meeting as to not give the impression that we're anti-development or, because they did not like what we were thinking about here.
Table the motion.
Table, table this.
Close the meeting or table the whole issue?
Table the issue for, table the issue till the next meeting and see with these business people if they can come up with a group, which it sounds like there was a good chance. Because this, this all may be taken, could possibly be taken care of.
But it feels like we're talking about two different things.
Right, we were to talk about whether we should or shouldn't close the meeting and now we're having a conversation that I don't think we should be having, so...
Well, you can make a request to table.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm meaning, before we even get into the discussion on this, I'm making...
Well, can, can we have...
Or continue this to the next meeting.
Can we have the discussion and not come to, and still table it?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, I'll, when we started talking about, when Tom took his straw pole about closing, potentially closing the meeting, I was...
I was of the opinion, yeah, I mean, if we're, we should be consistent if we're going to be talking about litigation and potential strategies, I guess, if you will, we should be consistent in closing the meeting. To be honest, I'm kind of backtracked on that, you know. I think we should, I think given the high profile nature of this, this might be a better one to have in an open meeting. So I would not want to close the meeting, that'd be my position.
I have no need, yeah, I don't need it to be closed, there's nothing I can...
Won't say, or whatever.
I mean, and I don't think...
So there's no motion to close the meeting, so now we're on to...
Do we want to table it?
Do we want to discuss this?
We want to table it till the next meeting.
And I guess my question is, what is the purpose? To Joe's point, which he was about to make or was still making and I tuned out, or something, I don't know, it seems like two separate issues. It's collect, collect on what is owed, and I hear what you're saying too, that there is some interest or some potential for others to jump in. I guess I see that as completely separate things.
Well, it is and it isn't because they're jumping in, they told me that they would be jumping in with the Barsonas people for it, and this could, and I'm afraid that this could poison the well for him to even want to continue.
Well, I'd just go...
And I just want to give it two weeks or till the next meeting, just, just to see if it shakes out. Two weeks, is two weeks going to make a difference as far as doing this?
We've an extra long break between weeks, so it would be three, but if there isn't anything from time, there's no urgency on this. We're not going to lose our ability to do it, that it's not going to change any argument, legal argument we would make related to it. So there isn't any harm in waiting a few weeks if the council chose to do so.
I, I think we, with all due respect, I think we could talk about, we should talk about it now and if we, I don't know...
Well, I mean, I'm not opposed to discuss it.
I'll tell you my position, I don't want to pursue any legal action. I don't think it's a good use of staff time and we're not going to get anything out of it anyway, so...
And I tend to agree, I don't think, I don't think, just looking at it and knowing how conciliation court goes...
So we don't feel we're going to get anything out of a legal action, but we think magically we're going to get money in the next two to three weeks.
If the same, if the, if the, if there's a group forums that can come back and reapply and he's part of the group, I think we're going to be collecting a good chunk of this money, if not all.
And I get, and I get your point, but I'm just speaking personally because I'm opposed to even pursuing it, that's why I'm...
The only, the only reason I'm saying, I mean, I'm opposed to the general principles of doing it, but the other is, it gives us a chance to collect it in the future rather than going through all this. There is going to be staff time driving all the way to Shokopee to appear in conciliation court.
All the way.
Well, it's, 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 it's at least forty minutes, you know, you're talking at least half a day.
So, I just, it's my personal moral compass, I guess, that to take some of the actions that have been taken by the individual involved, I don't think that's necessarily right to let that just slide for our community. I don't think that sets the right tone either. So I am not saying that I'm pushing for the legal, but I'm simply stating on the record that, you know, it's a two-sided street.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a business. And I personally, I would pursue legal action. I would, absolutely, wholeheartedly, because that's what I would do if I was running a business. Part of it is the principle, the fact that you didn't hold up your contractual obligation, therefore I'm going to pursue that. That, that's my stance. If the rest of the council wants to wait a few weeks, I don't mind waiting a few weeks, but my stance on whether we should or shouldn't pursue legal action, should we not get what we're owed, will not change.
Go ahead.
And I think, just hearing where we're at, I suggest we wait two weeks because right now it's going to be split.
We probably won't get money.
And the fall is going to get, so if, I mean...
Right, I don't mind...
So I think strategically wise, I think we should wait anyway, because...
And I'm not disagreeing, but I'm just being really clear that...
Kate's going to have fun.
Two to three weeks doesn't make or break this from our perspective of being able to do it.
I was so ready to debate this too.
So am I.
Gosh, this is going to be fun.
Well, I'd like to see, if we're going to debate it, we should have a full council.
Yeah, you're probably right.
So I am aware that council member Timberman has a very strong opinion on this.
Yeah, can you share?
And she did indicate that, I could share if it was appropriate during the meeting, but tabling would allow her to express herself, but her, she has a...
Oh, I thought you were leaving.
She felt strongly that we should pursue litigation, much along the same lines of, of, I believe, Trish's argument that this is a, it's a business, they fail to pay, in a business, if somebody fails to pay, you pursue action to recover, and this was a significant amount of funds. But I, again, I'm, this is, that's my interpretation of the discussion I had with her, and it might be better if she was to express her introversion.
I agree with Kate and I agree with Trish's spirit. I guess I look at it as a, you know, cost benefit piece. I mean, there's, you can take the stand of wanting just to set the precedent that, no, we're not going to do this, but at the end of the day, we're going to lose more money trying to pursue.
Well, the thing, this is what I'm looking at here is, even if we win, even if we win
in conciliation court, then it's appealed.
Okay.
Which it probably would be, because it doesn't cost that much to appeal it. Then we're going to end up with even more costs because it'll be going to district court.
Okay, so we've, I think we've all just stated that we're going to give it the two to three weeks, so we're not at the point of having to decide.
Right.
And maybe factors will change, but...
We all said we wanted to get the, they said you wanted to do the discussion, so I'm just giving my opinion, I kind of agree that it's, could be a loss fact, bigger loss factor for us.
If you're open to motions, Mayor, I'll make a motion to table this item or suspend or whatever the...
Table till the next meeting.
Table till the next meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
God, I was, I'm going to write notes.
Well, see, this shortens it up.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, reports.
Administration, we have nothing specific for council, and I'll start a question.
This is not necessarily a question for administration, but maybe it's one that you could answer. What, on the, the work that they're doing on the bridge on two, or on thirty-five and two, how long is that going on?
End of June.
It's end of June, okay.
I could answer that one, I just thought it was going to be a technical...
You're not defer to your experts.
Thanks for letting me look like I know something.
Is that about two weeks longer than what they originally planned then? I thought they said the middle of June.
Since I had contact with them, it's always been through the end of June.
Geez, Rich, we come to you for answers and...
Any other questions? Okay, nope. Any questions for Public Works? There was no... Any questions for Public Works, there's no, Police Department, no questions, Fire Department, none. Engineering?
Well, one quick thing on Fire Department, we will be doing interviews in the next few weeks for firefighter positions. Our hope is that we can find one or more candidates out of that to hire. Timing for that works well, because that would allow them to basically get acclimated to the department over the summer before they start their firefighter one, firefighter two, and first responder training this, starting in August.
How many applications did we have?
I'll be honest, Mr. Mayor, I don't know right off the top of my head. We got a whole slew of them right at the end, so.
Okay.
It was similar to the Police Department where we didn't have many until right.
One thing I can tell you about the tile line that Dan was in about, we are working with the Scott WMO on a grant ninety-ten match to, it's a water quality improvement that would basically replace the pipe that's on city property with a solid pipe, allowing water to impound and improve water quality. So it's not a replacement for drainage, it's a water quality project. It would have probably no, at least mathematically, I don't think he'd see a difference, but it would replace about a thousand feet of that pipe. If it goes through and so far Bowser's okay with it, they think it meets the criteria. There are no other projects competing for it in this area that I'm aware of, so it's looking good so far. You'll still get a chance to say yes or no, but we're making progress on that, so.
Not gonna ask any questions about Dan's right now, since you haven't had a chance to look at everything. No, try to be clear. Community development?
I'd like to inform the council that we spent quite a bit of time with the National Builders over the last two weeks that magically showed up at City Hall on a Monday morning, so that's, that's how things go, but that's, they've been very aggressively making contact with property owners in the area. We did have a developer separate issue on a DRT agenda that may be looking at petitioning annexation on a potentially thirty-one lot residential subdivision. And we have received an offer on the remaining, to quote acres, property, and it's in negotiations.
From the expected.
Very, yes.
Same in person, different investment.
Yeah, different investor. So that offer was submitted to Andrea for review, and she did redline it, and we sent it back with some counteroffer information, and we believe we'll have that for you at the next council meeting for action.
Was that offer for the asking amount?
It, it's in the ballpark, I'll say that. It's not the asking amount, but it's.
You have to discuss the details with the council more often.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to provide feedback. I did speak with our new developer just to find out how the interaction could be with the city and if it went well or not, and the feedback I got was that it was all very positive, you know, staff was responsible, there were no issues that he could come up with, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wondered about the timeline on that bid.
The purchase offer?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it could, because I'm definitely gonna reach out to somebody and just say that they've been an offer, and as soon as public, you're, I mean, you're saying it now, so it is, just to let them know that there's an offer on the buyer, so if they're still wanting on it.
Yes, that would be a great.
They, they would have. They would have to bid high and they'd have to be.
Fast.
Very fast, so.
There is a potential.
Means you gotta make an investment, Josh.
We do know, those details will be provided at the next council meeting, but we do know what the proposed call may be.
I kinda wanna check out Patrick.
Okay, any more questions?
Okay, good.
Just scratching the throat.
Sounds like a hunkle scratch.
There's water in the break room if you need a drink.
There's beer in Tom's office.
On right through Sandy's house.
Okay.
You do have a great walk. Sorry. Is, any other questions on community development? Any questions on the parks report?
Can I just, community development, did we, do we have any more leads on the two open spots?
In the bank room?
I do not, okay.
Oh, I think I, I am gonna be going down again tomorrow to Lee Sur to visit the Chinese restaurant. My wife has told me that's where we're eating dinner tomorrow, but it, that, that gives you a little bit of an indication of how good it is.
They, you know they are coming here.
Yeah, but it's not for another month.
Just wait two weeks.
Well, it may be a, probably a month, and you know how it is when you're opening. If you're figuring for the middle of June, it could be the end of June or, or, you know, I, I just don't wanna wait that long.
Okay.
Besides.
The mayor likes his Chinese food.
They are very good. And my wife initiated it. Let's see, we're on to, any questions on parks? Scale, we have already had, Minnesota MVTA is not till next week, I thirty-five solutions is back, Chamber of Commerce.
I, can I say one thing about the Chamber of Commerce? The, if you guys haven't heard, there is a ribbon cutting, the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring or lead, taking the lead on next week. It's this little bank in town called New Market Bank, and it would be great to see everyone there. That's my chamber plug.
I'll try not to cry.
Me too.
When did that project start?
It's, it kinda snuck through.
Regional council mayors, they had that, it was nothing real, repeat of a lot of other things, I will be getting some, haven't received them yet, but they were sending out some information on emails for the, the presentation that I will get to everybody, but it was a repeat of a lot of the stuff that Deed is doing and, but, and we'll have, hopefully, their goals for the rest of two thousand and eighteen, so. C C E C, we don't have Sandy. Anybody else know anything?
No, there's.
I think there's a few days is coming.
Gonna be wrestling.
It's gonna be wrestling?
Wrestling at Double Wide.
Oh, okay.
Right after, right after.
Like during the parade or something.
Right after the steak, steak dinner.
It's, it's the next thing that Josh and Steve are gonna do.
Yes. Now, I don't know if I'm going there, yeah, yeah, yeah. Get my hand on his taser.
That's how you familiar?
You know, I, I just thought that maybe we should have Steve wrestle Nick Paradise. I met with him the other day. Wonder who'd win then? Downtown Improvement Committee?
No meeting.
Fifty by thirty.
No meetings.
We have the steering committee meeting and nothing important happened, just that Friday is, this Friday, they, they're having the presentations of the, of the men cap survey and for the new web, possibility for a new website, for jobs, housing, transportation, the whole works for the county, so. That should be interesting, I think it's at ten thirty, I don't have my calendar up right now, but ten thirty Friday morning. Other than that, there were no meetings. Any discussion by council?
I attended the Scott County Human Resource Board meeting, and there was just some things that they talked about that I thought were interesting to our community at large. I mean, it's a Scott County thing, but being part of Scott County, so just really quickly, they, they do inter-county school-linked mental health, where they, they actually have representatives at the schools, and it's hugely, hugely successful, and it's been a partnership that's been in place for twenty-five years. They recently got money from Metro Health, they got grants for over half a million for over four years to go towards mental health. The DHS day treatment is adding another therapist, the intensive residential treatment, there's a, an independent bill that's going before the, the state, that's, they're looking for one point nine million, they're looking to put that in Savage in the old bowling alley. I guess lot's been empty for like ten years and there's, you know, city support of it, so, those are good things, we need erts in our area desperately. And then there's also a bonding request to add to their buildings, because they're just, you know, the government center there, they're, they're just really out of space and they're thinking that it's gonna be kind of in the same vicinity, so. It was, it was just a really interesting conversation on mental health in general, and the, the early, the earlier it's caught, the better the outcomes, of course, for individuals, and then the less impact there is to society in general, because then they're not going through the judicial system and that's a lot, huge expense, and so there is a, a presentation that's coming up in the future that kinda talks about some of that stuff, so.
You know, what is, what was this through?
I'm on the Scott County Human Resource Board as is Josh.
Okay, cool.
Actually, we've been on it for years. But, yeah, so it's, you know, when I hear stuff there that I think is, you know, it impacts our city, so. And that, that's also where, you know, I learned about, or we talked about this, the response that, that we have now, the crisis response is all part of that, our services.
I don't know if you were there for the whole scale meeting, but that was, but you was at the scale meeting as well.
Oh, good.
Janet Williams is the guru in Scott County.
Yeah.
And the leading proponent for mental health for.
Well, the, the numbers, the, the statistics, I mean, we should get the presentation, because frankly, it was.
Well, we're leaders, not just in the county, I mean, in Minnesota, we're.
No, right, we're leaders across the.
It's awesome.
Yeah, it's.
That whole being in the school is huge, and so one of the other things that was brought up was, you know, catching it at school is great, but they're already five years old at that point. You know, how do we, how do we start educating our citizens, our parents, to recognize those types of issues, because they often do display before then. And the earlier you can get mental health issues, it's, it's just better, so.
That's, that's part of the screening process of the kids.
You know, I, I don't mind saying, I had my fair share of mental health stuff when I was a kid, and one of the biggest, you know, sources of my life came from someone that was in a, a school that was able to recognize stuff and help me out.
Thank goodness.
Yeah.
Look how wonderful you are.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but I, but I'm a big proponent, and I think that's great that you guys are.
Yeah. That's it.
I have one, one, a quick one, prior to the grand opening, if I hadn't already mentioned that. The Fish Network, which the city signed up to be part of the Fish Partnership a few months back, they're having not like a full Fish meeting, but just a brief little, I don't know, get together thing at Firehouse about three o'clock, so just prior to the grand opening, so maybe great to have folks stop over if you're interested in learning more.
Starts at three?
I think so, yeah.
One thing I'm going to mention is last Thursday, I went to a breakfast in New Prague put on by the Mayo Clinic, and they did not realize we didn't have a clinic in town.
Yes, I was talking to Park Nicklet about the same thing yesterday.
Mayo.
Oh.
You know, they're, they've, they've got a lot of facilities in New Prague right now, and I talked to the regional vice president and the director of the facility here, and in the next few weeks, he'll be setting up a meeting with, first with Tom, and then Tom and me, to, and then whoever, possibly with the whole council, a presentation of what it would take to get a Mayo Clinic in town.
That'd be awesome to have a clinic again.
Yeah, New Prague's got one, apparently is popular.
New Prague has got the, well.
They have a hospital too, which is.
Yeah.
They have, they have multiple specialties and everything else in New Prague, it's really a fantastic setup, but it was, and Mayo Clinic has a, is doing a joint project, they're gonna be moving their rehabilitation center and combining that with the, the activities over at the new pool, and moving their equipment over there, so they will have full rehab services there, and then they'll be converting the building they're using for, space they're using for rehab service to other specialties, so. But we do, now we have a connection with Mayo Clinic, they, they're very receptive to coming here, so.
That'd be awesome.
And as a side note, I did mention that there's a couple of spots next to the bank, the bank.
That'd be perfectly small.
Well, the, for a smart, for a start clinic before they, that would be probably a perfect type spot, because.
They're separated though, right?
Well, Northfield Clinic had.
The way that phase one would be, yeah, it would be separated, where you couldn't have two bills, but with a phase two, they could take up multiple spots.
Okay.
So phase one, a separate spot.
Right.
Would, it was probably, would probably be as big or bigger than the spot that Northfield Clinic had here.
Yeah, Northfield had, had x-ray and a couple of exam rooms, lobby in a space, essentially where the tobacco, alcoa tobacco is, so.
I used to go there, so, yeah.
Alcoa tobacco.
It wasn't, it was, I thought it was where Solana Lur was, down one.
It was right next to Solana Lur.
Yeah.
By the exercise.
Yeah, it was, it was small.
It was very small.
It's where triage is now.
But, but it was sufficient for our small community.
But, and I, as I mentioned to him, the bank would have much better, that, those places would have much better access and parking than.
Yes.
Which I think were the biggest problems that Northfield Clinic had, so. It's, it's one more connection, I, I keep going out and trying to make connections and pointing people to our community, and sometimes it works, sometimes it's just planting the seed, so.
Only takes one yes.
The other thing I was gonna mention that I forgot on the, that was brought up at the steering committee is the Transportation Committee is working with Fish to try to expand the repair programs that are in Jordan, because there are other mechanics and everything else throughout the county that are doing repairs for people and trying to get them all together, working together to make it more efficient and help the mechanics and direct people to the places where they can get the help, so. It would be one thing that would actually work with the fifty by thirty, that we'd be using existing programs to solve a need rather than trying to develop a new program. Any other discussion by council?
Most, most do adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.